Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, July 21st. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks?
Present.
Councilman Brightwell?
Here.
Councilman Cruz? Councilwoman Haynes?
Present.
Councilwoman Proton Hicks?
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag?
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum?
Present.
We have a call in.
If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First on our agenda this evening are a number of reappointments and one appointment,
Well, good evening, Council. This evening, I would like to call up Janelle Speed-Hale. She's with us. And also, Michael McFarland. I don't believe, I know Mr. Gray could not attend, and I don't believe Sharon Jones, Amar Tank, Louis Poole, Monique Holiday Beatty, and I know Dr. Crum is not available this evening. So anyhow, this evening, we have the appointment of Ms. Speed-Hale. You can come closer.
All right.
And to the Public Arts Commission, this is a mayoral seat. We also have, with Council permission, we have the reappointment of Dr. Lilian Crum of Lawrence Technological University as a reappointment. Again, the Arts Commission has always had what we call the LTU seat. It's a good connection. In this case, Dr. Crum is the professor of graphics, so she's been a great help. Then we have the reappointment of Brandon Gray to the Parks and Rec Board. We have the reappointment of Sharon Jones to the Art Commission. We have reappointments to the Brownfield Development Authority of Amar Tank and Louis Poole and Monique Holiday Beatty. And then reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority of Mr. Michael McFarland. So I am asking for a motion to approve these, this appointment and these reappointments. And again, thank you to Council Chair of the Boards and Commissions, Mr. Brightwell, for allowing me to move this forward with his consent as it's Council appointment.
Yes, Mr. Brightwell?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the appointments and reappointments as identified.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the appointment and reappointments as presented. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Congratulations.
And we'll ask our city clerk to come up and swear in Ms. Hale and Mr. McFarland.
Mr. White. Hi.
So come over here.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform, and I will faithfully perform, the duties of the office of Ms. Speed-Hale, City Center Advisory Board, and for listening.
No. As Public Arts Commission.
Southfield Downtown Development.
Thank you, sir. And for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, and the State of Michigan.
All of them.
Okay. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
The Council would like to congratulate you. Come on up. On the side here.
Welcome aboard, Ms. Janelle.
The Southfield City Council has established the following rules or procedure for all speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council. Each speaker is responsible for his or her comments, and the City of Southfield does not, by permitting such remarks, support, endorse, or accept the content as being true or accurate. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section may be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly. If a person addressing the council refuses when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace if they continue disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public, may not provide responses to public comments during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future, should it be needed. The council may respond to comments at the end of communications if they are able to do so. Our first speaker is Julie Stuckey. Julie? Stacy Jackson?
Good evening, Stacy Jackson, President of Beechwood Acres Homeowners Association. Good evening. I am here today to bring a matter of community concerns. Airbnbs, as you know, a few of the council people on the, here with us, are familiar with a number of the concerns that we've had. Chief Barron and Southfield Police sent a number of 911 calls that we, uniquely from our community with the large lots, make reports daily, almost, about. I need for this council to know that my concern for the seniors in my community has nothing to do with grandstanding. We have airbnbs in our community where the partiers actually have armed security with AR-15s. So our seniors are literally holed up in their homes, afraid to come out. We have consistent videos and images of partiers doing spin-outs and donuts on our seniors' properties. Some of them have gone as much to plant trees that have been destroyed, boulders, combs, throughout our community. I am hoping that the city follows suit with the City of Dearborn to do more to prohibit and restrict where these airbnbs are in our communities. Protecting our seniors is important. My care for them is sincere. We've been successful in helping to shut down one of the airbnbs in our community just simply by us always galvanizing to come out every single time there's a loud, obnoxious party. We have another that is there, and I have seniors literally surrounding this airbnb where I get consistent calls all day, all night, because they are afraid. That means something to me. My own mother lives independently and is 90 years old. We need to do more about this issue. We do need to do more about how we protect our residents from these. And we understand that airbnbs help support businesses and small businesses and the such. But when it comes down to our seniors literally being holed up in their houses, afraid to come out because of this activity, then we do need to respond to that. My question is, where are we in addressing this issue, and is the city planning to follow suit with the City of Dearborn to restrict where these parties can be held?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
How you doing today? I absolutely agree with my wife. We had got a call from one of our seniors who live in the mayor's neighborhood. She's been harassed consistently by a renter. Six foot five guy, you know, telling her that he's mentally ill and, and, you know, threatening her life. She'd made three police reports already. You know, our seniors, Southfield is a senior city. Most of our homeowners are seniors, and they want to feel protected in their homes. We really have to put effort towards protecting our seniors at all costs. They want to live in their homes till they pass. They don't want to rent one of these high-priced, overpriced units in Southfield. They want to stay in their homes. The other thing we have to work on is talking among ourselves. When I say talking among ourselves, I'm talking about we're getting more and more calls about the Black Caucus. When will we have our own meetings? Instead of turning our Dem Clubs into Black Caucus meetings, our Dem Clubs is for all races, not just for black people, but for all races. We should not turn our Dem Club meetings into just what, you know, talking about the black situation. I'm looking, I'm getting a lot of calls about Joseph Persons. I'm getting a lot of calls on why we only have one meeting a year. How can we resolve the issues in this city with one meeting a year? We got a lot of work to do to unify this city, because it's definitely racially divided with what's going on with Toby Rhodes. We got a lot of work to do in this city. We got rents too high. We got our, we got the airbnbs going on. We got our seniors being threatened. We got too many liquor stores. Liquor stores right next door to one another. We have to, this is your job. This is not my job, my wife's job. When you, when you approve these bad decisions, you got to first ask yourself, how do it affect us? Because we are being affected through your bad decisions. We really need help in cleaning up our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Garland McWilliams.
I hope I can get all this out. I'm pretty upset about this. Oh, thank you. My big concern right now is the condition of our roads. And I brought this issue up before about Mount Vernon, Lincoln, connecting side streets. They did repave Pierce, and that was greatly appreciated because it was almost unpassable. But now, Mount Vernon is almost the same way, between Greenfield and Southfield and the connecting streets. And I see they're doing work on the other side of Southfield, between Southfield and Northwestern Highway, and it needed work, but I haven't heard a plan about my neighborhood. I have pictures here. I brought, took my time out, and I'll leave them, leave these with you. You got potholes here that aren't even, nobody's even tried to patch up. And then when they tried to do some patchwork, I think last year or so, and they didn't do it right. They just dumped some, some patch in there, and that was it. You're trying, you're putting patch over some dirt, and that's not going to stay there. You know, somebody's not doing their job. I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but I live here, I pay taxes every year, a good amount of taxes. From what I understand, Southfield has some of the highest taxes in their residence in the area. And I'm going to leave these pictures with you. And I tell you, I'd be glad to take you for a little ride down my street. You know, on Pennsylvania, between Estelle and Pierce, there's potholes there six inches deep. And I can't see why it should be that way. Is there anyone coming around and taking a look at this, inspecting these streets and everything, or is somebody just sitting back collecting a paycheck? I don't know. Like I say, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but the job has to be done better. I've lived here for over 25 years, and, you know, I get fed up. And I'm not moving anyplace. This is my neighborhood, and I'm going to stay here. If I have to keep coming back, I will. Thank you. And here, I'll leave these here with you.
You can hand them to Mr. Crowe, and we'll get them. Our next speaker is Greg Keeler. Greg Keeler? Okay. Our next speaker is Dan Lammers.
As a resident, I would like to request the City of Southfield to allow residents to officially add an external storage building and/or ADU to the zoning requirements. This would provide additional storage accommodations for residents whom already have and attached garage currently on their premises. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening to the council. I'm going to be real quick and say, it appalls me that people don't get concerned about our seniors until they become a candidate. I have a 43-year history with this city, and if I still voted in this city, I would ask a candidate this question. How long have you been in the city? At what point in time, before you became a candidate, did you get concerned about me as a senior? And what have you done thus far with all the years that you've lived in the city? Stop using my seniors that I have supported and have been around and donated and gave my money for 43 years. Stop using my seniors to get a vote. That's the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing I wanted to say, I got a couple of calls over the weekend, and they were talking about a flyer that's out with someone that's running for mayor. And they wanted to know if what was on the flyer was true. So let me set the record straight, and I'm going to keep saying this until the election. The City of Southfield does not foreclose on homes. You have a certain amount of time to pay your delinquent taxes. If you don't pay those taxes, your taxes go to the county. The county is the only entity that forecloses on homes. But the cities do have what they call the first right of refusal, so they can get those houses back. Now, the second thing, there was never an article, that I recall, where the City of Southfield had to pay $38 million, and that this case went to the Supreme Court. Which Supreme Court? The Michigan Supreme Court? The United States Supreme Court? I'm not familiar with it. And I can say, after 43 years in this city, I pretty much know a lot of what's going on, and I didn't hear it. What I did hear, and what I do know, is that the city was dropped from the lawsuit because the city did not make a profit. All the focus was on the county because the county made a profit on those houses. So I'm going to say to you candidates, stop trying to dupe and bamboozle my seniors and my residents. I have come to these meetings for 40 years and never ran for city council. So I can speak and say, my seniors, I support their events. I make donations to their events. I put my money where my mouth and my passion and my support is. If you're not doing that, stop calling my seniors your seniors because you want that senior vote. And stop talking about voter suppression, because we don't have it here in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes communications for this evening. I will, I'm sorry?
If you can remove the list, please, please.
Council, our... She wants to recognize? Yes. I will acknowledge you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Can you please give us your name?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Betty Robertson. I reside at 21889 Glenmore. And I just have a few things to lift tonight for your attention. First of all, Southfield needs swimming pools. We need swimming pool for our youth and for adults. I used to attend a senior swim class. I can't do that anymore. I have to go to Royal Oak or West Bloomfield. And I don't pay taxes in those cities. So we need a swimming pool that will accommodate our children and our seniors. Secondly, we need a water park. I have five grandkids, and I take them all to water parks in Sterling Heights, Berkeley, and other places. Why don't we have that for our toddlers? We need that. I pay $10 to go to Sterling Heights for my grandkids. Thirdly, Incanook Park. I love Incanook Park. I'm part of a senior walking group. We walk there every morning, 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock. And the bathroom has been broken for the last three years, and we were told that you were going to fix it. It hasn't been fixed yet. It's rotting in the ceiling. You can see the water coming through there. That's a safety issue. We need to fix that. And number four, maintenance of park, like Beechwood. I took my granddaughters to Beechwood, and I just happened to be there, and he was playing in the sand, and I saw a lady who works for the Parks and Rec sitting in her, in her truck, on the cell phone, and there was trash in the sandbox. And I asked her to remove it. She said, "I don't have time to do that." I said, "But we're paying you to do that. And you can tell him you don't have time?" So she got mad, and then she stormed over there and cleaned it up. That's dangerous. My grandson is two years old, and he has to play with debris in the sandbox? That's the problem. Also, I mentioned the parks for toddlers. We need a toddler park that would accommodate children 2 to 4. Incanook is too dangerous for 2 to 4. They only have one section there for those kids. So Farmington Hills has one. Berkeley has a beautiful one, and it's all padded. We need to emulate those parks and have one here. Okay? Sixth is Loscher traffic at night. I live two blocks from Loscher, and from 12 o'clock till like 3:00 in the morning, it's a race track. People are just flying up and down the street. They're doing wheelies in the middle of the street. That's the problem. Even though I'm retired, I want to sleep at night. Okay? There, when I moved to Southfield 30 years ago, they used to ticket old and old parked cars, the unused car, in people's driveway. They don't do that anymore. Why? It's an eyesore to see those old cars parked in the driveway year after year after year. They can't be utilized. Make them get rid of them. I had one, when I first moved here, I had to pay to move it. It was raked, I wasn't using it, so I got rid of it. What happened to that policy? We need to clean our neighborhood up.
Your time is up.
Okay, okay. Taxes for homeowners, this is the last one, I'm sorry. My son bought a house and...
Your time is up. I'm sorry.
Five years ago, two years ago, and the tax was $5,000. Now the tax has gone up to $12,000. That's a lot of money for young couples moving to Southfield. And he's not the only one. And thank you for listening.
All right. I will try to address some of the comments that were made this evening. As we reiterate every week, if you have a problem with your Airbnb, please, or if you feel there's one in your neighborhood, please call the Building Department, and they can investigate it. You can reach our Building Director, Mr. Charles Woodward, at 248-796-4117. And he's sitting in the front row. You can speak to him in the hallway as well. When we do find out about some of these homes with parties, we do shut them down. We had two shut down this past month. But this is not just a Southfield problem. This is a problem happening in every, every, every city, including Farmington Hills and West Bloomfield.
Right. We can't hear you. Mike?
All right. Can you hear me now?
Turn your mic off.
The mic is on. Okay. We will, so...
I contacted cable, and the computer's down, so the volume is not good.
I will, I will try to speak louder. The, the Airbnb issues come up every week, and every week we tell residents, if you believe there is an illegal Airbnb, the city has an ordinance. You can reach out to the Building Department. Mr. Chuck Woodward is sitting in the front. His phone number is 248-796-4117. This past month, the city actually shut down two homes that were having parties, that were charging admission fees and were very loud and large, and we did shut them down as we become aware of them. We do investigate. But this issue is not new to Southfield. It's happening in West Bloomfield, Farmington Hills. It's happening in every city. It's not unique to Southfield. There was comments about road repair. The city has a proactive road repair program. This year, in fact, we are projected to spend just under $38 million on road projects that includes water mains as well. And that is in a number of parts of the city on different roads in different neighborhoods. That includes water mains as well, and that is in a number of parts of the city on different roads and different neighborhoods. We can't do every road every year because traffic would get even worse. And the section that the gentleman spoke about on Mount Vernon between Greenfield and Southfield, as of now, is scheduled for 2028 construction year. But we do see the pictures with the potholes, and our Director of Public Works, if you could raise your hand, please, is in the audience. He heard the comments as well. If you have anything specific, you will make sure that the crews go out there and patch that accordingly. We had a gentleman who spoke about ADUs. This was something that the council and the planning commission spoke about last month. It's something that the city is currently looking into and investigating to allow those in certain zoning areas. Mr. Planner, do you wanna add anything?
No, it's under review.
Okay. Thank you. We had a speaker who mentioned high taxes, a few speakers. And as I mentioned last meeting as well, the city does a very good job managing our budget and our taxes. In fact, the city's tax rate per mils is about twenty-six point eight mils, which is thirty-six cents for every dollar you spend on taxes. The other taxes, the other money that you spend in your taxes goes to the county and goes to state education and city education, OCC. Our tax rate for the city is lower than most cities in our surrounding area. We do a very good job managing that as well. Swimming pool, the city, in this last fiscal budget that we just passed in May, or in June, I'm sorry, last month, we did earmark twenty-two point five million dollars for an indoor enclosed, all-year-round swimming pool. And we hope to meet next month with architects and developers to finalize those plans. Water parks is a more difficult subject. We wanna work on our swimming pool first. We did have a plan for a splash pad that the area, the neighbors rejected that plan, and so we went back to the drawing board. They felt it would be a burden to their neighborhood. I will ask, I know that we do have, some of our parks do have play equipment for younger children. I don't know if every park has that, but our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Terry Fields, if you could raise your hand, please, heard your comments about Inglewood bathrooms, and it will be addressed, and she will report back to the council. And we will have an update at our next meeting as well to share. And we will also, if you have, code enforcement with old cars was addressed as well. Southfield has an app called Southfield Solutions. You can put your code enforcement request into that app, and it will get routed to code enforcement, and they will take a look at those cars or any other type of code enforcement issue that you have can be reported. You can either report it anonymously, or you can have your name attached to it. And if you do attach your name through the app, they will, you can follow where the progress of what code enforcement or whatever city department that you contact is doing or has done. And we will reach out to our police chief regarding the speeding on Loscher, I believe between eleven and twelve mile, and we will have him address that as well. Did I address everything, counsel? Okay. I just wanted to follow up with our counsel. I got some updates from some past issues. We had a speaker a couple of weeks ago who had issues with the noise at the car wash that they just built on Southfield Road. Our code enforcement director was out there today taking decibel level measurements. She will be going back out there later this week when there's more cars and people there to get another accurate reading and report back on those findings. There was... There, we had a speaker who had some issues, code enforcement issues, in her neighborhood on Matriot Street. And code enforcement sent, it's continuing to look at those, and the list of violators is shrinking as residents take care of weeds and garbage and other issues that are surrounding their neighborhood. So code enforcement does follow up because that started about two months ago, and there's still a few stragglers on the list who have, who need constant reminders. There was also, someone was upset that the Imperial Market parking lot was cracked and not striped. That has been resolved as well, so we are moving forward, and we do take these comments seriously. And just in case, I don't know if it was missed, but we talked about the accessory dwelling units. It's something that's under review currently by the city for the additional storage or small garages and things like that. So we are looking at that. I just also wanted to mention that over the past few meetings, I've received numerous calls and messages from residents who have expressed their support and concern. Many have shared that they feel that I have been a target of personal attacks by political candidates who appear more focused on spreading false and divisive information than on uniting our community. I deeply appreciate the encouragement, and I remain committed to representing our city with integrity, transparency, and respect for everyone. Thank you. With that, we will move on to the next portion of our meeting. Hopefully, I'm talking loud enough. We have several sets of minutes to approve, and counsel, I know that there were some questions. Councilwoman Banks?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to ask that the minutes from the regular meeting of May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four be pulled. I'd like to talk... May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Did I say it wrong again?
No, you got it.
Okay. And I'd like to talk to the city attorney regarding some of the votes that were within that set of minutes. And also, the committee of the whole meeting for May eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. If those minutes could be pulled, I think both of these can come back before counsel at the next meeting.
Counsel, do you have any other minutes that you'd like pulled for review or discussion? I would ask that if we can pull the minutes from May fifth, twenty twenty-five, and then May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five as well. But we will accept a motion for the other minutes. Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes in the following quarter for twenty twenty-four. Cowell meeting minutes for April eighth, regular meeting minutes for May sixth, cow meeting minutes for May ninth, May thirteenth, and May fifteenth. And then for twenty twenty-five...
What about May eighth?
May eighth.
Nancy, Councilwoman Banks pulled, she said...
No, the twenty twenty-five meeting.
She said G.
Oh, she didn't say May eighth?
No.
Twenty twenty-four?
No.
I apologize. Cowell, May eighth, twenty twenty-four. And then for twenty twenty-five, cow meeting minutes for May seventh, May eighth.
No.
No. May seventh is okay?
May eighth, she pulled. Okay, I hit the wrong year. Sorry. And then regular meeting minutes for May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Support?
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hove, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the minutes for April eighth, twenty twenty-four, May sixth, twenty twenty-four, May eighth, twenty twenty-four, May ninth, twenty twenty-four, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Also, May seventh, twenty twenty-five, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Counsel, do you have any items you wish pulled for further discussion? Councilwoman Banks?
Yes. Items C, E, G, and L.
All right. And Councilwoman Brightwell? What?
Item F and I H.
Okay. So let's start with Parks and Rec. Ms. Fields? All right. Mr. Brightwell, what, we'll start, we'll just take them in order. So item C, that was...
I'm sorry, which item?
Oh, sorry. Councilwoman Banks, SMART.
Yes.
Thank you. So the SMART program that is before us this evening is to assist the seniors and those with disabilities.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess my question, and I'd like the public to be aware, if they need to utilize these services, what is the telephone number that they can call? There's nothing in this communication.
I can get you that. I don't know offhand our dispatch number for our senior area. We can get that for you? But I don't, I don't have, I don't memorize, I don't have that memorized. I'm sorry.
Okay, and I guess the second question is, if a senior or someone with a disability is gonna utilize this program, what is the cost?
It's a suggested five-dollar donation.
Five-dollar donation. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe we can bring that phone number back.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Don't leave yet. There was a question on the rough area mower for Evergreen Hills Golf Course.
Yes, that was my item. Thank you. Is this mower only to be used for the golf course?
Primarily for the golf course. We do use it on campus in some areas as well, but it's primarily at the golf course.
I guess the question is, is this something that, like, Public Works can use to clean up some of the areas also that, if I'm understanding what a rough area mower is? And I guess to Mr. Zorn, do we, do we share these mowers with the different departments? So is this something that if Public Works doesn't have it, it can be shared with them to clean up some of the areas?
I guess I'm not quite sure.
We do share some, but this particular piece of equipment, if I understand...
For the golf course?
Is exclusive to the golf course?
Just exclusive to the golf course. Okay. I see our Public Works Director up here. Do we, do we have such a mower in Public Works to try and clean the brush?
No, like I said, it's for the golf course, but if we ever need something, we will reach other departments.
Yeah, we always share equipment.
Okay. Thank you. I guess the reason I was asking, because there was a question regarding why certain areas of the city to Public Works weren't being cut, and I thought we didn't have that type of, an equipment. And after reading this, I thought this type of equipment could be used for that, so...
No, not for that.
Not for that. Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna say, I found the SMART number.
Oh.
Please.
Sure.
The SMART number for residents is eight-six-six-nine-six-two-five-five-one-five. Again, that's eight-six-six-nine-six-two-five-five-one-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's if you're not a Southfield resident.
No, this says, counsel, and then I checked their website as well.
Oh, okay. But you can also call our senior services in Southfield, seven-nine-six-four-six-five-four, and they can help you out as well. We have a lot of ways to contact.
To ask, you know, since she's getting that card, will there be posted information? Because, I mean, we're getting the number here, but will there be posted information somewhere where the residents can see that or anybody can see that they can have access to that?
The question is, do residents know about this service?
Oh, absolutely. So, I mean, I would hope so. It is on our website. I said, will there be posted information, posted information, so the residents can see that, you know? Sometimes people don't check the website. Is there a sign or somewhere where they're gonna be able to see that they can have access to that? I guess I don't understand what you mean by posted, and I'm trying to understand what you mean. Are you talking about, like, on our Instagram and our social medias?
Flyer or sign.
There are flyers. We do send out the scribe to our senior residents as well, and it is on our publication for Parks and Recreation. So when they go to our website, that information is there as well, plus everyone's mailed that information.
Anything non-electronic, because we sometimes assume that everybody checks the website.
Oh, yeah, no.
A lot of people really don't.
I appreciate you saying that. Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now we move into the Public Works questions. The question was on the camera truck. Was that you, Mr. Brightwell? Okay.
I just wanted to give a little bit of... I did reach out to, I had other questions. I did reach two department heads previously, so I got some answers, questions answered. Now, these are two very, with respect to the camera trucks, two very expensive trucks, close to four hundred thousand dollars a piece. Can you tell me specifically why we are purchasing these trucks as opposed to using an outside vendor?
So we spend approximately two million dollars a year on the outside vendor, right? That's something that we're cutting out of our budget now, and this is a one-time purchase that we can use for the next ten, fifteen years to perform this work in-house. We have better control on the product, on the quality of our work. It's low-hanging fruit.
Okay. I can understand the numbers. I just wanted to hear your rationale for it. So if, what is the difference between, from a layman's standpoint? This is two, almost four hundred thousand dollars. What's the difference between the two trucks?
So one of them has a smaller camera that launches into the, into the leads. The other one is just for the main line. So one goes main line and leads, and one is just for main line.
Okay. So this is, what you just said, the two, the two items that you mentioned, those are routine, ongoing issues for the city on an ongoing basis every fiscal year?
Correct, yes. And, you know, we have a program of, we try to, every five years or so, we try to complete a full inspection of our system.
Okay. What type of annual maintenance is required to keep these two individuals up and running on a smoothly basis, smooth basis? And how long will they be down for routine maintenance?
I would imagine, I mean, these are brand-new, so initially, it really would just be oil changes and so on, you know? It's not, there's no heavy maintenance here that's involved.
Okay, I'm looking at maybe a year or four.
Yeah.
Both of those trucks will be...
And I mean...
Four years. What type of routine maintenance would they require? And how long would they be down?
At most, I don't envision these being down more than a week, you know? And as far as the routine maintenance, I, there's really not much other than maybe software upgrades and so on, but just what you would typically expect for vans.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'll leave that alone then. The... Who will perform this maintenance on these vehicles?
Sorry, say that again?
Who will perform the maintenance? Is it in-house, or we had to send it out to a shop that specializes in these vehicles? Or would the maintenance be performed in-house?
It depends on the issue, right? A lot of the, a lot of the routine maintenance can be done in-house. If it's something specialized, we'll have to send it out. It's how we deal with most of our vehicles right now. I'll say the current one that we have, it's not out of service much at all. It's, right now... right now, the, the problem that it has, whenever it's out of service, it's more so a computer issue than a vehicular issue.
So it can be used as a backup?
Yes. We'll keep that as a backup, yes.
What's the life of one of these vehicles? What's the life of each of them?
10 to 15 years.
That's when we purchase it. That's the kind of life that they say is 15 years, 10 to 15 years?
Yes. Yeah, we're gonna target 12. We're gonna target 12 years.
Okay, all right. Okay.
What was your next item?
G, uh, H, F and H.
Okay, so go, go, you take it. Go, you can ask your question.
They have another line, similar questions with respect to... What, what, this is from a layman's standpoint, just reading this. What, what is this vehicle, what is it actually doing?
Uh, so it can be used for a multiple, multitude of tasks, right? You can break up concrete with this, pull the concrete up with this, you can use different attach, attachments on it. It can even be used for, you know, parking lot, snow removals and so on. It just depends on the attachment that you have on the, there's multiple attachments.
So what do we buy it for? I mean...
We, we bought it envisioning using it for, for concrete work. So for removing sidewalk that may be damaged, you know, as we're gonna replace it. So we're planning to start doing more concrete work in-house, and that was the purchase that we made.
Okay. So why do we need two?
We don't. We just need a trailer for the, for the skid steer. Right now, it doesn't have a trailer that's compatible with it. So right now, we can only really use it in the yard. We need to have a, a trailer that we can use to haul it to the site.
Okay, I'm looking at item H.
You're talking about the road material and debris removal?
Yeah, item, dirt, garbage removal and, removal service.
Oh, is that what you, okay.
Yeah, I went from that one. We moved on to item H.
Okay.
Okay. Why, why do we do, why do we need two? I see one with Shelby Smash Company.
Oh, the company, okay. So Shelby Smash came in very low, right? Their, their prices are across the board around half what the other, other vendors bid. So obviously, if they can deliver on that, it'd be great for us, right? But if they can't deliver on it, then we're losing out on, on materials that we need, possibly poor quality materials, right? So we're keeping, we're, we're awarding both as insurance, basically. So we'll, we'll, we'll utilize the, what's more, more cost-effective for us. But if we find that there's delays in delivery, or the quality is not there, then we will use Ellsworth, who we've been using for several years now and are pleased with.
Yeah, so they said that Shelby, we've been using it for years, and they were acceptable. I mean, they were good vendors. So it, it kind of baffled me.
Shelby?
Excuse me?
Shelby? Or Ellsworth?
Yeah, Shelby Smash.
Yeah.
Okay, we've been using him for quite a while.
We have not. We've been using Ellsworth.
Ellsworth? Okay. So you, Shelby came in $131,000?
Correct.
And Ellsworth is $276,000? Who will, and that was one of my questions, how would they be utilized? The more expensive one or the less expensive one? How, how would they be utilized?
We'll use the, the, the less expensive one unless we find a deficiency in, in, in quality of material, or maybe Shelby has better quality in a certain material, Ellsworth is better in another material. It'll take some, we have to utilize them a little bit before we figure out exactly how we're going to utilize one versus the other.
Okay, I have a one, a couple more questions. Now, this is purely from a layman's standpoint. What, what would they be doing? And I can read the words on this, I can, I can read the words, but from a layman's standpoint specifically, what would they be doing? Would we ask them to do something?
So they bring, for example, they'll bring gravel, right? We need gravel, they bring, they bring gravel for us. Or we have crushed concrete from a sidewalk job, they haul that away for us. That's basically what it is. So the debris removal, or they bring in the road materials, the fresh materials that we need, whether sand or gravel or a list of other things.
Okay. And... One of them is a, is a standby? The cheaper one is a, is a primary, and the more expensive one is a standby?
No, I mean, initially, we'll go with what's more cost-effective until they demonstrate that they can't perform the service, if they do. And in that case, we would go to Ellsworth.
Okay. All right, well, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I've never seen anything like this. And we got two vendors that can do the same work. One just had to be more expensive than the other. But we're gonna keep both of them. The one that we are familiar, we're gonna keep him simply because we know his, his work is good.
And Councilman, you know, later in your agenda, you've got a, a similar situation, as-needed contract, right? Two engineering firms, you're giving both of them the contracts. They're as-needed contracts. So you decide how you want to use them, you know?
Okay, so that, that's Southfield's way of doing things? That's what you're telling me?
Yes. I mean, that's not just Southfield. Many cities do it, though.
Best standard operating procedure in the industry?
Yeah, especially for, for materials, when you, you don't want to put out an RFP every time you need to order a load of sand, you know? So.
Okay, just finally. There's such, such a huge disparity in the bid price here. I'm looking at a lot, $131,000?
Yes.
$276,000?
Right.
Is there something missing in the bidding that somebody, just, how can, how can one do something so cheap while the other?
Right, so Shelby Smash, we, purchasing did reach out to them and, and asked them if these prices are, were, were a mistake. And they said, yeah, actually, they were a mistake, but we're gonna stand by them. So they, they said they're a little bit lower than we intended to actually put them, but they said they were gonna stand by them. So we'll, we'll see.
So Dan, Dan, just FYI, certain, certain vendors buy in greater quantity. So they, so they may be able to give a price cheaper than another bidder. So when they're given the bid specs, it's up to the petitioner to ask questions on the specs that were identified, and then they respond based on those specs. So if that's the price they gave, that's the price they have to honor.
Okay. I'm fine, I'm fine when he just said that, that they highlighted that to, to the firm, and the firm said they want to stand by, stand by their mistake. And they...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
I hate, I gave you a call a couple times today. I wanted to get this taken care of over the phone.
Oh, sorry. Next time, I'll make sure I pick up you. I said, next time, I'll make sure I pick up your phone, so we, we avoid this here.
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks, you had a question on the trailer for the skid steer?
Correct. Thank you. And this is just a comment, please. I'm in favor of the purchase of the trailer. However, we purchased the skid steer truck in October of 2024. It's disappointing to read that we don't have a trailer to move the truck. So I'm just, in the future, if we're gonna purchase a truck that needs to be moved, we should make sure that we also have a trailer to accommodate the vehicle. So.
I agree.
I know this new truck has been sitting since October 28, 2024, but...
There's use for it around the, around the yard as well, but yeah, it's not being fully utilized without the trailer, so.
Okay, so in the future, if we could just look at the whole picture, please?
I agree, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then you had a question on the DIA?
Yes, yes. Let me just pull this up, and then, again, this is real quick, where hopefully. Um, with reference to the, the Detroit Institute of Art Partners and public art, and where this project is going to be, where is, it says it's gonna be relocated to Southfield Arts and Activities Building. Where is the Southfield Arts and Activities Building, please?
The old daycare?
Who?
The old daycare?
The old daycare? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Banks, there's, there's an illustration. It was included in your packet as well.
Okay, I didn't realize that that's what we called it now. I've known it as the daycare for years.
I've known it as both.
And I was trying to research, where is this building? I thought maybe it was somewhere on Parks and Rock. Okay, thank you.
All right, counsel, any other questions? All right, well...
Through the chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Item A, fiscal year 2026, SimCog membership. Item B, upgrade of Cisco Collaboration Architecture. Item C, authorization to sign agreement with Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation, SMART, for Specialized Services Operating Assistance Program. Item D, authorization to purchase ADA-compliant golf carts for Evergreen Hills Golf Course. Item E, authorization to purchase the rough area mower for Evergreen Hills Golf Course. Item F, authorization to purchase camera trucks. Item G, authorization to purchase trailer for skid steer. Item H, road materials and debris removal services. Item I, receipt of bids. Receipt of bids for Hooper Boulevard Reconstruction and Utility Improvements. Item J, approval of second extension to professional engineering consulting services contracts. Item K, release for review, amendment to Sustainable Southfield 2.0 Comprehensive Master Plan. Item L, authorization to accept relocation of the 2024, 2025 Detroit Institute of Arts Partners in Public Art Project. Item M, authorization to utilize opiate settlements to purchase six LifePak 35 cardiac monitors from Stryker. And finally, item N, proposed Lathir Village Fire Protection Contract Extension.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve Consent Agenda Items A through N. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next, we move into our public hearings, and the first is a request to rezone the parcel at 27301 West 11 Mile Road.
Thank you, through the chair. The existing zoning is B2, Planned Business. Proposed zoning is ODD Overlay Development. This is located within the SMART Zone sub-area and is eligible for the ODD tool. To rezone the property from B2, Planned Business, to ODD Overlay Development District to permit a wider range of tenant uses per the ODD user list. Current site is B2. Master plan supports local mixed use. This is an existing site area. This is building elevations facing east from Inkster Road, facing south from 11 Mile Road. The site has previously received site plan approval and landscape upgrades. There's no physical changes to the exterior of the buildings at this time. This would allow for greater leasing potential of uses by the proprietor. Permitted uses and special uses under the current B2 are listed on the screen above. And then, these are additional uses, including recreational uses of facilities and some research opportunities. So with that, I'd like to invite the petitioner to come up and make a few comments of why they're proposing to do this. And afterwards, we need to open a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you can give your name and address for the record, please?
Yep. CJ Schiavel, 34975 West 12 Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan, with Friedman So yeah, this is a proposal to rezone the property to ODD with B2 underlying, underlying zoning to permit a wider range of uses, which really, really, at the end of the day, is to help us backfill the property. You know, B2 is a business district for commercial use, but primarily, it's, it's for convenience, retail, shopping. And historically, this property has been occupied, you know, really as back office branch banking, then it was known as Cumberland Tech Center, and now it's Sun Research Park, obviously, most recently occupied by Sun Communities back offices and showroom and warehousing space. So the B2 zoning has been kind of inconsistent with the use for, for quite some time here. And the, the goal really is just, you know, to correct that historical inaccuracy in the zoning and to enable us to, to backfill the property and, and, you know, return it to productive use.
Okay. We will have a public hearing and see what questions come up. So this is a public hearing for, to rezone 27301 West 11 Mile Road to ODD, to reaffirm the previously approved site plan as the master development plan, to create the ODD agreement to permit the reuse of the, the existing site and buildings for a wider range of uses permitted per the ODD ordinance in the SMART Zone sub-area, in addition to those permitted per the existing underlying B2 zoning. Anyone wishing to speak will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number's 248-346-0439. I'm concerned about any petitioner coming before this council asking for a change. Now, unless there's something that you're not showing, for people at home that don't quite understand what an overlay developmental district is, they may not understand the B2, can you show the site in its current state? And then can you show like a colored rendering of what they're hoping to change it to? I heard what he said, but I'm still not clear on what it is that he's asking to do. And don't you think when they come with a project, that it should be specific in the agreement or in the project, what they're looking to do? If you remember many years ago, about 15 or 17 years ago, we had a petitioner to come here, and all he wanted was a B3. And it was all these things that he could do in a B3, which meant he could have changed his mind at any time and maybe not knew that he was supposed to come back before council when it was different than what he originally said at the council meeting. So do you have some renderings to show what this property looks like now in its current state? So do you have some renderings to show what this property looks like now in its current state? And then what they're looking to do, because this doesn't really say a whole lot. I mean, I'm not even an architect, and I could draw something like this. I just wanna know a little bit more information, what it is that they're looking to do and the service or business service they're looking to provide. And what are these lines with the Martians at the top of them? I just, I don't understand it. Can you please offer a little bit more specificity? Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Crowde?
Well, I'm gonna ask the petitioner to come back up here, but in order for them to pursue uh, letters of intent to lease or attract businesses, they have to have the right zoning in place. And, um, there have been some vacancies of recent. Uh, they want to expand the uses. Uh, as they stated, it's been zoned for really a strip center, but it's been used for a lot of different back office businesses, banking. And then we had the Sun, Sun Glamping in there. Uh, so in order for them to move forward with, um, pursuing new tenants and businesses, they wanted to expand the allowable uses. So this levels the playing field for them to attract and retain new businesses that fit better with the existing development. And as I stated, there's no physical changes at this time to the building. It's just the way the building is going to be occupied and the permitted uses that will be allowed with the ODD. This is another way of trying to find adaptive reuse of buildings that are primarily vacant. So again, if you wanna add to that, if you could come, come back up here, I don't know if you can talk about, just in general terms, some of the tenant mix that you're pursuing?
Yeah, I guess, you know, today, we actually raved, raised the roof on this facility years ago, and it's, it was formerly used as, um, a showroom space for Sun Communities. So they had all sorts of, you know, demo setup, um, you know, showcasing their products. It wasn't actually a retail store. Yeah, it wasn't actually a retail store, but, you know, it, you know, it was, it was a showroom warehouse effectively. And, um, you know, like, like was mentioned, you know, it's, the, the historical use here hasn't been consistent with the B2 zoning for quite some time. Um, and, you know, we've had tenants such as, you know, we had a 15,000 square foot, you know, flex office user, um, engineering firm that was, that was looking to occupy space. We had, um, you know, an indoor recreation tenant, Pickleball, that liked the, the high ceilings, um, in the warehouse space. Neither of those two users, you know, or those uses would have been permitted under the B2 zoning. So fortunately, negotiations went, um, went nowhere. But, you know, effectively, if we, if we're permitted, um, to, to expand our uses, we can actually go after these type of tenants in a serious manner because it's just, the conversations don't go very far when you're not zoned appropriately for the use that someone's looking to locate at the, at the property. We're not, you know, looking to knock down walls or anything like that. We're just looking to reprogram the existing space, not make a bunch of changes architecturally, et cetera, um, but just to expand the uses that, that we need to go after, you know, prospective tenants.
Could you, um, tell the council what percentage of these buildings are occupied currently?
Uh, three and a half percent, yeah, entirely vacant.
So you got three and a half percent occupied. We're trying to backfill that 97% by allowing for a greater list of potential uses. That's really the purpose of this.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other questions? No? You have a question?
Uh, no, I have no question.
Okay. Councilman Hoag?
I move that we approve the request to rezone the parcel at 27301 West 11 Mile Road to ODD Overlay Development District to reaffirm the approved site plan and create an ODD agreement to permit the reuse of existing site buildings for the wider range of uses permitted in addition to those permitted per the existing undermined B2 zoning as well as the, uh, the recommended condition.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the rezoning as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1815.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to introduce ordinance number 1815. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is a text amendment uh, to update the exceptions to height standards specifically addressing flagpoles.
Yes, uh, this was discussed at our study session. Uh, we did get contacted by, um, a development to install a 200-foot-tall flagpole, um, and we found that we didn't specifically address flagpoles. Whenever we had an accessory structure of a certain height, we were utilizing the height restrictions for cell towers where they required, um, 150% fall zone. We wanted to update the zoning ordinance to allow for exceptions under the height regulations. And where an engineering structural report was provided that said that the pole was self-collapsing, the building official could grant a smaller fall zone. So this is really to address an issue that, um, kinda had a loophole in the current zoning ordinance. And, um, again, uh, this clarifies any ambiguity in the ordinance specifically dealing with the height of flagpoles, uh, which are covered now under the height limitations of that particular district. And it also provides for exemption on the fall zone if a structural engineering report, subject to review by the building official, is provided.
So we will have a public hearing. This is again a text amendment to update the exceptions for height standards specifically addressing flagpoles. If anyone has any questions, you'll have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Did I hear Mr. Crowde say that we didn't have a policy put in place and we were using the standard from the height of the monopoles? So with all the other businesses that have beautiful flags, um, up and out and posted, do we know the height of the existing poles that we have? And are you gonna base this amendment on those or the size of the monopole? Maybe I was missing something 'cause I was texting, but if you could just repeat that, I would appreciate it. And I yield the rest of my time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Well, um, through the chair, um, again, the height of an accessory structure uh, is limited to the height limitations of that particular district. So it might be different from business to industrial to so forth. The other thing with regard to fall zones is that we require 150% fall zone for cell towers. So if you had a 200-foot-tall pole, you would have to have a 300-foot fall zone. So this, uh, we do have exceptions in our schedule regulations for clock towers and cupolas and, and other architectural elements to a building that can exceed the height limitations of that particular district. This would specifically address, number one, flagpole height, and number two, um, the fall zone required for these, uh, flagpoles. If a structural engineering report is submitted, then they would not have to meet the, um, 150% fall zone. Currently, if they want to exceed the existing regulations, they have to go through the Zoning Board of Appeals for a waiver. So this would eliminate that extra step.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Yes.
I move that we approve the text amendment amending Title V, Zoning and Planning, Chapter 45, Article 22, to update the exceptions to height standards to specifically address flagpoles.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the text amendment PTZA 25-0003 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1816.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to introduce ordinance number 1816. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have one ordinance to enact.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes, um, I move that we enact ordinance number 1814, text amendment of Title D, Zoning and Planning, um, Chapter 45, zoning of the code of the city of Southfield. Um, and this is to update the uses permitted in the B1 neighborhood business, B2 planned business, and B3 general business zoning districts to include executive, administrative, and professional offices.
Support.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number 1814. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we are up to the council portion of our meeting.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Councilwoman Yolanda Haynes for the National League of Cities Conference in Tampa, Florida.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the travel expense for Yolanda C. Haynes for the National League of Cities in Tampa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Council, do you have any comments this evening? We'll start with Mr. Brightwell.
Uh, my comment is for all veterans who might have a, an issue, uh, freestyle 988, and the number one, if you're having, uh, any issues emotional or whatever you might have. And also, um, as I've stated in the past, a lot of people who might hear us speaking, they might not be veterans, but everyone might know someone who has a child, who, who has a friend who is a veteran. And we know that veterans only, only 47% of veterans nationwide utilize the, uh, benefits that are available to them. So there's a lot of benefits that are currently available to veterans. And just tell the veterans to reach out to the VA and, uh, to get registered with the VA to utilize their multitude of services, be they medical, educational, or just the things that can help you with your day-to-day life. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Haynes?
I don't have anything.
All right, Councilman Hicks?
Nothing this evening, sir.
All right, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, thank you. Um, this Wednesday, the city of Southfield is, will be hosting um, Dangers of Synthetic Drugs Community Forum. It will be held in the, um, pavilion. And I believe it starts, um, at 5:30 through 8:30, um, PM. Also, the city of Southfield will be waiving garage sale permit fees, um, August 4th through August 10th in recognition of natural, national, excuse me, Garage Sale Day. And then also, for those looking to, um, do some summer activities, we have various concerts that, um, are being held throughout the city. So, um, if you're curious as to what's going on, you can check the website, um, as far as where they're located, whether it's here or at the Berg site. Thank you. And that's all.
All right, Councilwoman Hoag? Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes, um, in reference to the garage sale, uh, this past year, we introduced an ordinance to have two garage sales, uh, per year, didn't we, uh, with the city? Didn't we, uh, agree to that? Yes, we agreed to, right, right. No, I mean, two, not in the six months' time, that you can have two a year without being in the six months' time, meaning they don't have to wait six months to have another garage sale. Wasn't that approved? Right, I just wanted to remind residents of that because that means that we don't have to wait six months to have another one, because I did the calculation on that, and it was usually during cold weather that you would have to wait during that time. So I just wanted to remind the residents of that and that you can have two per calendar year without having to wait six months, which I think is really great and a good idea, just from a perspective of, uh, being a person uh, that has had garage sales and would like to get rid of stuff. It may be a good idea to schedule your garage sale around a free one. And if you have people come, you can send out a notice and let them know that next week and you can have your next one, which will be good because that way you can have them back to back. That means you don't have to put your stuff away, but you can get rid of more stuff. And also, um, I don't know if we still have this going on where you can sit out things that are not, uh, that you don't want, and they will come by and, I think, would it pick them up still? The things that you don't want for the, uh, that are good things out there in the city, but doesn't someone come by and pick up the bulk things that you don't?
You have to call.
Call, okay.
Simply recycling.
Okay, simply recycling, recycling, that's a good thing. I'm saying that because I see a lot of people put out a lot of ni- nice things, and there are lots of donation centers that are in this area. Especially, we have a new store, two new stores, Goodwill and Restore. And I'm telling you, another man's junk is another man's treasure. And instead of just, you know, if you don't have the time to put them out, or if you just pop them in the back of your car and take them to these places. Uh, the Goodwill is a great organization that helps to rebuild people in the work, workforce. And, I mean, they do a lot for this community and for the, uh, the, uh, you know, tri-state area. Um, so, not tri-state, tri-city, I'm sorry, tri-city area. It's just so important. I hate to see people throw out stuff that someone else can use, and we can really help somebody else. And also, the Restore is in need of good products. And they're also on Telegraph Road, not that far, and they have a large facility, very nice things. If you wanna drop off things, they would highly appreciate it. Um, and I'm not sure if they pick up, but it's just easy to kinda help those companies out that really keep them going and keep them, uh, thriving in our city as well. So thank you for that. And one other note, I do care about seniors, and we all up here care about seniors, and we are doing our best to, to do what we can. And there are so many programs. There's a senior social at the library for seniors, and they do come out and have an excellent time at the library. And Parks and Rec does an excellent job to support the seniors, and they have a good time. So just wanna let people that, uh, like I said, some people don't watch the website, read the, you know, maybe not, uh, look at it, but there's a good way of getting connected with other seniors. And there's also meetings in the pavilion for seniors. These are free, all free resources. And there's walking in the pavilion for seniors. So we have things to do where people don't have to be afraid to come out. And this is not a community to be afraid in. We have excellent, an excellent police force that does take care of our community, and we are very proud of them. And we don't want our seniors to think that they ever have to live in fear. So let's not put that fear out there for our seniors or any residents in this community. And my mom, and I know most moms always may have had something to say about saying good things. Sometimes it's good to say, um, good things, and if you don't have anything good to say, don't say anything at all. Not saying you can't come before us, but if you are speaking bad about your city, uh, you know, I mean, think of, find something good to say. At least, if you don't wake up every day doing that, if you can come here and just find something good to say. And, you know, we, we'll take the criticism and the things, but there are so many other good things that we have to be proud of in this city of Southfield. And I'd like to see it celebrated and talked about and spread out amongst our people. Not saying you can't come forth and have free speech, but please, let's just incite people to say good things about our community. That's how the good news spreads. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'll just, um, we talked about things we have for seniors with the concerts, and, uh, seniors can also, there's, uh, Parks and Rec puts out through our senior services a newsletter called the Southfield Scribe. the Southfield Scribe. It gets mailed to seniors' homes. If you don't currently get one, you can call our Parks and Rec department, or you can come into our Parks and Rec building and pick one up and be asked to be added to the mailing list. But we also have a lot of programs for youth. So, this week, for example, Parks and Rec has Recreation on the Move, and they will be at two different parks on Tuesday. They will be at Civic Center Park between 4:00 and 6:00. And on Thursday, they will be at Miller Park, also between 4:00 and 6:00. And this is a free program for kids up to the age of 12 approximately. Parks and Rec staff will be there doing different activities with your children or grandchildren or your, whoever you want to bring. But while you're there at Miller Park on July 24th, and for those who are not familiar, Miller Park is located on Webster and Southfield Road, right behind Home Depot. They are having paddle in the park. Parks and Rec will be there, this is for all ages. If you're curious about paddleball and want to learn how to play or want to improve your game, they will have paddles available. So, this, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Miller Park, they will have paddle in the park, and should be a good time. I know that I've tried to play once, and I probably need to work on my game a little bit. So, that, again, will take place on Thursday. From 4:00 to 6:00, you have Rec on the Move for children, and then from 5:00 to 7:00, paddle the park for everyone to learn how to play paddleball. Pickleball, I'm sorry, pickleball.
Pickleball.
Pickleball with paddles, you know, it's confusing. But, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's been a long day. All right, maybe we'll see the mayor there.
Yes, good evening again. I want to mention that we have recently welcomed two new businesses to Southfield. At the Providence Hospital Medical Building on the first floor is LabCorp. This company does blood and urine, other doctor-order test, testing. Very convenient for patients that are seeing doctors in the medical building as the lab is on the first floor. Also, as you know, the strip center at Ten Mile and Southfield had a disastrous fire about two years ago, and slowly, the center is being reoccupied. I do want to mention that Wing Hang Restaurant has reopened. That's Southfield's oldest continuously operating restaurant. They have redecorated the dining room, and of course, they do a tremendous takeout business. And then finally, in that same strip center is the designer or design menswear. We were there, several of us, on Saturday, a week ago, Saturday, and the, quite an array of styles and fashions. I'll just leave it at that. Some of it's conservative, some of it's sporty, and some of it is flashy. Is the best way I can describe it, but great variety of clothing. So, we welcome these businesses to Southfield, and we welcome back Wing Hang Restaurant. Also, I want to elaborate a little bit on Councilwoman Banks's comment about the synthetic Dangers of Synthetic Drugs Community Forum. This is sponsored by the Southfield Police Department, the City of Oak Parks Police Department, Farmington Hills Police Department, and the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, as well as the Chaldean Chamber, Sam's Club, and our Domestic Violence Task Force, and Moms Demand Action, and Jewish Family Services. Again, this will be in our pavilion, and it's 5:30 to 8:30 on the 23rd, so that's this Wednesday. It's a free event, and the moderator will be investigative, former Channel 7 News investigative reporter, Ronnie Dahl. Also, I'd mentioned that there are light dinner will be served afterwards, since it's starting early, and folks may be coming right from work or childcare centers or wherever. Anyhow, free event. We credit our police chief with organizing these informational forums, as this is the latest in a series of forums that the department has held. Thank you.
I have no items this evening.
Please, man, I have no items either. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just wanted to say this evening that this is the official start of the in-person, early-voting election season. It will begin this Saturday, right here in our Parks and Rec building, Room Number 115, on Saturday. It begins, again, at 8:30 until 4:30 Saturday. Following that entire, next week with Thursday, the hours will be 12 noon to 8:00 p.m. at night, and then that following Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from 8:30 until 4:30. So, if you would like to cast your ballot in person, you have nine consecutive days in the city to participate in early voting. Currently, we're also receiving absentee ballots back to file, and if you want to request an absentee ballot, if you're not on the permanent absentee ballot list, you can call our office at 248-796-5150 and participate in voting. It's your right. If you have any questions about your voting status, call 248-796-5150 as well, and thank you so much. This primary election that we're having, the primary election date is November, I'm sorry, August the 5th, and it is a mayoral primary only. That's the only issue that we have on our ballot, but it's a very, very important issue. So, please exercise your right. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to remind our viewing audience, the summer tax bills have been mailed out July 1st, and hopefully, everyone's received it. If you haven't, we can offer duplicate copies at the treasurer's office, as well as also the information is available online. You can go to taxes.cityofsouthfield.com and be able to look up your tax information, and also, it'll give you instructions of how to pay. The due date normally is August 31st, because it comes out over a weekend, it'll be the next business day that we extend it to. But I also want to remind the viewing audience that we also offer the FERMAN program for disabled veterans, as well as also just anyone who is disabled and senior citizens. If their household income is below $40,000, they can apply for an extension of time to pay their tax bill, and they can make partial payments along the way, but it'll be extended. We can accept payments up until March 1st, but we also work with Oakland County that extends that deadline through April typically. So, definitely, if anyone does qualify for that, I encourage them to apply. We can provide the information that's required. We require, it's got to be your primary residence, and again, household income has to be proven that it's below $40,000, and I'm working on legislation with our contingent in Lansing to increase that limit, because over 20 years I've been treasurer, that limit has not changed, and fortunately, the cost of, you know, the inflation rate has gone up, but that $40,000 limit has not changed, so hopefully, we hope to get that indexed for inflation and adjusted, so more people can take advantage of the program. Thank you very much.
I forgot I have one other announcement. I just realized that this is the last meeting prior to Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival, our biggest event of the summer. It's August 8th and 9th. Kimmy Horn concert on Friday, the 8th, starts at 6:30 and goes to 9:15. She's ending a little earlier this year. And on Saturday, it goes from 3:00 to 9:15. The event is free, except $10 parking on-site that helps defer the cost of the generators that runs the concert.